I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's one way to get your commissioners to come back in the room. Just start. We're playing for Bax to get upset today because Commissioner Bennega is going to be leaving a little bit early. With that being said, I'd ask you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end by Commissioner Kelly that have all the agenda in it with supporting documents. Robert in the front row has listening devices if you need them, and just see him and he'll set you up. Okay? I guess we're ready.
Routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of May 21st, 2013.
Move approval. Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $436,226.35.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Burke?
Today's bills, there were 130 individual bills for mental health ranging from fifteen to $15 to $2,600.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel. Item A is to approve the routine action.
Do a motion for routine action.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item B is consider a motion to approve conversion of one budgeted part-time legal office assistant for the public defender's office into a full-time legal office assistant position. Jenny Addicks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jenny Addicks from Human Resources. A part-time legal office assistant in the public defender's office is tendered for resignation. Tracy needs a full-time legal office assistant, so she'd like to take this opportunity to convert her part-time position into a full-time position. I know you've gotten a memo about this already. If you have any questions, I can certainly answer them for you.
Any questions or comments?
Just a comment. Now, she indicated in there that she can do that within her existing budget, so I think it's important we keep that in mind.
Okay. Any other comments?
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item B is consider a motion to approve salary increase for Carrie Benz, Assistant Director of Human Services.
Because of the additional responsibilities that Carrie has taken on, not only since she started, but particularly in the last two years with her management and development of the Safe Home Program and the Jail Reentry Program, the Human Services Director Carol Muller would like to increase her salary by 5 percent, moving her from a 21-6 on the pay matrix to a 21-8. Again, I know you've received a memo about this. If you do have any questions, either Carol Muller or myself would be happy to answer them for you.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none?
I'll move for approval. Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number six are application for abatement. Kyle Helsa.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Helsa, Equalization. We have quite a list this morning, and there is one basic reason for this list, in that the city of Sioux Falls only considers the abatements once a month. So we receive all of these in floods. These properties are all located within the city of Sioux Falls. So, the first one is, the point is to serve. This was granted exemption by the County Board of Equalization. Record ID 59542, in the amount of $24,520.19.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it for conversation.
Comments? Commissioner Bennega.
Kyle, can you give me a little more detail about where this property's at? And, I mean, this is an unusual, quote, "church" property, if that's what it is.
Yes, it was one of the properties that we called into the Board of Equalization to make their presentation. I believe Pastor Kiesbell was here and made the presentation on the point to serve. It is a Baptist, quote-unquote, "church," for a lack of a better denomination to use. They did purchase the property on Kiwanis Avenue, across the street from the racetrack, and it had been taxed before.
Bingo.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And that's what this is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any additional comments?
I'll be abstaining on this.
Okay. You have one abstaining. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to one abstaining.
Item B is for the Special Olympics of South Dakota. Record ID number 84860. Property taxes in the amount of $1,151.56. This is another exemption that was granted by the Board.
Make that motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
The next, for lack of a better word, bunch, which it seems to be, are veterans exemptions that are granted and authorized by the state of South Dakota, up to $100,000 for a veteran who is permanently unable to work. Not disabled in a wheelchair, but unable to work. Is certified through the VA. We check all of their paperwork. These exemptions were granted by the Commissioners at the Board of Equalization time. And if you'd like, I'll go through them quick with the record ID number and the amount.
I think that'd be probably a good idea.
You'll notice that it takes, for a $100,000 house in the city of Sioux Falls, the taxes on it are $1,504.77. That's why that amount seems so consistent.
Oh, okay.
The first one is for record ID 73600, in the amount of $1,617.97. Record ID 442, this is a decal, a mobile home, in the amount of $67.01. Record ID 25414, in the amount of $1,504.77. Record ID 31063, in the amount of $1,504.77. Record ID 39356, in the amount of $602.47. Record ID 46875, in the amount of $1,504.77. Record ID 49780, in the amount of $1,376.96. Record ID 51698, in the amount of $1,504.77. Record ID 58227, in the amount of $1,339.86. Record ID 64418, in the amount of $593.66. Record ID 70605, in the amount of $1,504.77. Record ID 72383, in the amount of $342.20. Record ID 74566, in the amount of $1,504.77. Record ID 79662, in the amount of $1,504.77.
Thanks.
The next three are for the surviving spouse of the veteran. They retain the $100,000 exemption until they remarry. Record ID 70608, in the amount of $1,504.77. Record ID 40059, in the amount of $1,504.77. Record ID 36994, in the amount of $1,504.77. The last is record ID 46753. This is for a paraplegic veteran. First 2012 property taxes in the amount of $1,575.96.
Thanks, Kyle. I'm going to take them in a bunch to approve them all. It would be...
Move to approve items C through T. There are 18 items.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Madam Chair.
I would just comment, it's interesting, we got this with the Memorial Day weekend here at the same time, and I think that, in visiting with Kyle, that there are quite a few younger veterans that are now qualified under this, and it's something that we as community need to be concerned about, our new veterans who are injured or whatever in our many wars.
Thank you. Thanks, Kyle. And Pam?
Hi. I have one abatement today, and it's for ID number 23010, and it's for $902.60.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second for an assessment freeze. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Item number seven are notices and requests. Item A is the auditor's office is requesting authorization to publish a notice of hearing to consider an application for a retail on-off sale malt beverage license and a retail on-off sale wine license for the Riviera by Rocos. The licensed property is legally described as Lot 2 of Track 1, Genie's Edition, Northeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter, Section 28, Township 101 North, Range 48 West. The property is located at 26665 481st Avenue in Brandon, South Dakota. The public hearing will be scheduled for June 18th at 9:00 a.m. to consider the two applications.
Okay, and this is just an authorization, or a request for an authorization for publication? Can I have a motion?
Move to authorize publication for June 18th hearing.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to authorize publication. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
There are no planning and zoning notices, and there are no petition for compromise of lien. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
This is an opportunity for the public to comment on anything that is not already listed on the agenda. And seeing no one, we will move forward.
Item 10 under regular business is to authorize acceptance of a proposal from Bill Garnos for inmate population forecasting and analysis update for Minnehaha County. Warden Jeff Gromer.
I'm Jeff Gromer with the Warden with the jail. We're just asking for acceptance of a proposal from Bill Garnos, here on behalf of the Community Corrections Advisory Committee and the Sheriff. The proposal is for a inmate population forecasting and analysis update for the county. Mr. Garnos did the original forecasting when the jail, current jail was built. That proved to be fairly accurate, and we would like him to update that with the considerations for the Corrections Center and the Advisory Council. The proposal's for $12,472, and there was a specific allocation of $100,000 in the building fund for work studies and architecture concerning the Corrections Center.
Any questions or comments for the warden?
I would just make a couple of comments. First of all, I think that this is, the statistical information is probably the most important part of our growth, or hopefully alternatives, for incarceration that the governor started with his program. I think we need a basis of a good forecast. Mr. Garnos has done an excellent job for us in the past. The $12,000 is a small fee, frankly, compared to what we're spending in incarceration costs, and I think to have accurate information to get this process started so that we can look at alternatives is extremely important, so I would encourage your support.
The timeframe on this, I'm looking quick and I don't remember, is it three months?
Yes. He's predicting it'll be 128 hours of his time, but it was about a three-month timeframe where he thought it would happen.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions?
Madam Chair. You know, I think that we are subject to quite a few vagaries of change. I mean, if we go to .05 on the BAC, if, you know, we raise the drinking age to 30, you never know what's going to happen. Legalize marijuana, I mean, it's difficult. I know that some years back, we hired a company to do a space study on our campus here, and they came back after much ado and said, "We need more space." I predict we will need to have more prisoners, and, you know, I'm teasing when I say that. I do plan to support it, but I think it's really, it's like asking an economist what the things are going to be in five years. It's difficult.
Christopher Kelly.
Well, my understanding was that he was almost right on track with where we are today and what he forecast, what was it, five, 10 years ago? It's important, even though there's, and there's been changes in that interim period, particularly in the rates of violent crimes in this area, but I think this is really important for the committee to have and to see where we're going with the CCC and with the whole new justice program, so I would urge your support.
Any other comments? Looking for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Item 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign a contract between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Corrections to house juveniles in the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, you'll recall that Mr. Cheever did meet with you here a couple weeks ago to get your authorization as part of contract negotiations to raise the rate that we charge for the Department of Corrections to house a juvenile in the JDC. The current contract rate is $245, and actually expires this Friday, I believe, and that so the new contract is for $250 a day. It runs from June 1st, 2013, through May 31st of 2014. Kirsten has reviewed the contract, and we've noted that the only changes are some contract language regarding some new federal acts and our responsibility to comply, and we don't see that that's going to be an issue on compliance. So, those are the only changes in the contract, and we recommend your approval.
Any questions for Ken?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Item 12 is consider a motion to approve the submission of juvenile accountability block grant application on behalf of the LSS Middle School Diversion Officer Program and VOA Community Service Program. Erin Serska.
Hi. Good morning. I'm Erin Serska, JDI Coordinator, and it's that time of year again to submit the JPeg Grant. This year, the funding did go down a little bit, and next year it's going to go down significantly more, so we'll have to relook at how we're spending that money next year. However, for this year, we want to continue funding a middle school diversion program. It's been very successful the first year. We have a diversion officer right in the schools to help the kids get through, and then also to continue help fund the community service program over at Volunteers of America Boden Center. It provides our youth on diversion and on probation the opportunity to get connected with community agencies to complete their community service. And I'll ask, any questions? I did send a memo.
Commissioner Kelly.
On the Lutheran social, why is that not redundant with the school resource officer?
Because it's, a diversion program is usually funneled from the state's attorney's office, not done through police officers, so...
Thank you.
It's for the evening report center.
And then the other, they have after-school programming at the Boden Youth Center, so it also helps facilitate keeping that open as well.
Any other questions for Erin? Looking for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with Geotech Engineering and Testing Services to provide construction materials testing for Project MC 142 CONC-13, County Highway 142 Pavement Restoration, and Concrete Joint Repair. D.J. Boothey.
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This agreement is for Geotech Local Testing Firm Materials Testing Firm to provide materials compliance testing for concrete and asphalt on our road project that is currently advertised and set to begin construction here soon. These types of contracts are typically 2% to 3% of the total construction contract price, and this roughly $6,000 agreement is in line with that construction cost estimate. If you have any questions about the work or anything else, I can answer those at this time.
Any questions?
D.J., is this the only concrete highway we have in the county?
Yes, it is. I believe that it was originally a state road, and that we took over, and that's how we ended up with a concrete road.
Move approval of the agreement.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 14, consider a motion to approve the purchase of road salt from Central Salt and hot mix asphalt from concrete materials from contracts competitively bid by the city of Sioux Falls. D.J. Boothey.
Thank you, Cindy. Both of these contracts were bid by the city of Sioux Falls. One of them is set to expire at the end of June. That is the salt, road salt contract, and the city of Sioux Falls will be rebidding that, and we will tag on to that project hopefully also. The two contracts, first, the road salt, the contract price is $53.26 per ton. Currently, we were paying $58.58 per ton. Annually, we usually spend, use about 5,500 tons, and so this will annualize the savings of about $28,000, just over $28,000. The hot mix asphalt, last year we paid $48.93 per ton. I would presume that had we bid this, it would have gone up a couple dollars per ton, but at that price, there's a cost difference of $5.93 per ton. The city of Sioux Falls contract is $43 even. And we're using 25,000 tons this year. We're proposing to use 25,000 tons, so this will result in a savings of just over $148,000. Excuse me. So between these two contracts going with the city of Sioux Falls, we're saving over $177,000, and the city is happy to work with this on coordinating these contracts, and the vendors are also very happy to work with us. We have letters of approval on the contracts in the bid packet, or in the briefing packets that you received, and I can answer any questions about these at this time.
Questions? Comments? Commissioner Burke?
I would make a motion to approve, and then I would have a question.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
D.J., in the past, occasionally, we've bought hot mix from a company other than, that won the bid, just because the location is closer to the worksite and the cost of hauling as such.
Right.
Will we continue to do that, then?
No, we will not continue to do that. The way that this contract is set up, there's no provision for transportation costs. It's just a unit bid price for supply of material, and there's no provision for any type of transportation cost calculation.
So if concrete materials has to take it to Sherman, that's the way it goes?
We are the ones that transport it. We pick up the asphalt, but if we have to travel to Sherman, that's just the way that it goes. Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully, with the competitive bid process, we are still getting a better price anyway, so...
Right. With the savings of $148,000 with this, that will offset any transportation cost.
Mr. McFarland.
I would just like to remind you, Commissioner, this is directly as a result of some of the changes that you instituted with the purchasing policy and how we add these larger items and the requirement that we asked department heads to go through to check the city of Sioux Falls bids and the state of South Dakota bids, et cetera, and so I think this is an outstanding example of how that policy worked, and D.J.'s to be commended for what he's been able to accomplish with this.
A lot of money has been saved in the highway department and in several other departments by using the new policies that we've instituted, so thank you. We do have a motion in a second. Any additional comments? Look for, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 15, consider a motion to approve the transfer of capital assets, equipment from the Minnehaha County Highway Department's capital asset inventory to the Minnehaha County Parks Department capital assets inventory. The equipment list is in the auditor's office. D.J. Boothey.
Commissioners, this is basically just a housekeeping item, moving eight pieces of equipment that were listed in the briefing memo from the highway department inventory to the parks department inventory. I did incorrectly state on the briefing memo that this transfer will prevent future highway fund dollars from being expended on insurance for this equipment. It was brought to my attention that those expenses were taken out of the parks department for these pieces of equipment, so I don't think that there will be a financial impact because of this transfer, but as I said, a housekeeping item to make sure that the equipment is under the correct department's inventory, I think is prudent.
Any comments? Questions? Commissioner Burke?
I guess I would ask the auditor if he thinks there's any issue transferring them.
Bob Letts from the auditor's office, no, I do not believe there is.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve? Motion to approve the transfer?
Yep.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16 is consider a motion to approve county auditor's request to enter into independent financial advisor agreement with Public Financial Management Incorporated and to authorize proceeding with bond refunding process. Bob Letts.
Good morning, folks. Bob Letts from the auditor's office again, and today I do have four items that I'd like to discuss with you, and the main idea here that's prompting this discussion today is the idea of significant savings to the county through a refunding of some of our debt portfolio. A while back, it was about a year ago, that we had a financial advisor come forward with a proposal for the county, and at that time, it was called an advanced refunding, and the situation was that it was going to save us $868,645 over an eight-year period. And there would be some funding fees of $65,000 upfront, plus another funding fee of $65,000 when that event would have taken place, should it have happened. I looked at the situation, and on the face of it, it sounded like a pretty good deal for the county, and I'm always interested in saving the county some money. But it also involved moving 10 to 11 million dollars worth of the county's debt portfolio. Moved it around, and, you know, I was fairly new in the office, and I'm also not an expert at bonds, so what I did was sought a second opinion. And with that second opinion came the idea that perhaps these rates would stay flat, and that we should wait, and there would be a serious benefit, or a considerable benefit to this later on. And, you know, as this time passed on, here we are today, and it's true that, you know, by waiting, we've doubled that amount of money. And so that advice that I sought out was well thought out, and it's of much benefit to the county. And as a result of that, the timeline that we got to go through, and I put that timeline in your folders, does anybody, you want me to put this timeline up on the thing?
Sure. I can put that up there.
Our timeline for this refunding starts in the beginning of June here, and there's some items that need to be done fairly soon, and that said, I would, I've also talked with Jessica from PFM who is here today. She says that we do have a little bit of time, but, you know, things can change in that bond market and could affect the outcome of the deal here, but the time is at hand here, and that's why I'm asking that we go forward with this. The other thing, the timeline and sequence, you know, if there's some questions about that right now, I'd like to, you know, I'd like them at this point, so we can move forward.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I would ask a question on that issue.
Okay.
Bob, on the email dated May 23rd, from Jessica Cameron to you, it says, "I do not think the dealer will no longer be available," which is a double negative, which means she does think it will be available?
Well...
Or did she mean to say that it would not be available?
And I would defer to Jessica here, and I noticed that...
Yeah.
Jessica, would you please...
Apologize for the grammatical error. Jessica Cameron Mitchell, PFM.
Just grammatical deal there?
It is. It is actually, it would still be available at this point in time within the bond market.
And that could change. Okay.
Well, honestly, with where rates are and where your existing...
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry. With where rates are today and where your existing bonds are at, rates would have to rise pretty drastically over the next three months, like a percent and a half, for this no longer to be a feasible option, and for you not to be able to save more money than the original proposal that was given about a year and a half ago. Rates would actually need to go up more than 2% for there not to be savings in total.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That being said, there is some upward pressure on rates right now. That being said, there is some upward pressure on rates right now. Not to that extent, but it is a matter of, the longer you wait, the more rates could creep up over the next six months.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Bob, I'm not clear on what, we got specific debt we're going to refund or refinance?
Yes, it is. And what exactly that is, I cannot tell you, but I would defer to the experts for that. I did not bring-
Do you know if we're going to change the expiration date, if, for lack of a better term? If a bond is already going to expire in 2017, that will not change?
No, we will not be changing that. The best analogy I could think of is if you're going to the bank to refinance your house for a better interest rate. I believe that'd be accurate analogy. And also, if you've noticed, the, you know, the first of the years when, or in September or October is when these bonds would be sold, and then at the first of the years when the benefit would start coming back here to the county here. So I think that, you know, we do have some time here, but I'd still like to get this thing started if the county's to receive the full benefit of what's happening at this time.
So sixty-five thousand dollars will come out right away?
No, that sixty-five thousand dollars would have come out right away on the original proposal we got a year and a half ago. This sixty-five thousand dollars would be rolled up into the refinancing.
Question. And maybe you just said that. So the cost for this is sixty-five thousand, or the cost will be based on the percentage of money we save, or how is the cost to the county rolled into this whole thing?
The financing fees, from my understanding, is about sixty-five thousand dollars to do this type of a transaction. When the bonds are sold, however, our financial advisor will also get their fees at that time, and that would be regardless of which financial advisor we used. And the financial advisor fees, the original request for a proposal that I sent out was answered by two of them. One of them was Doertie and Company, and the other one was PFM. I believe Doertie's was nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars, while PFM's came in at twenty-five or twenty-six thousand dollars. And that was just for the fees for the financial advice that we got.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kelly.
When, there was a lot of references to Doertie's initial savings versus what PFM is saying they will save us.
Yes.
I think PFM calculated theirs in April or in February, one or the other. When was the Doertie proposal made? Did they bring that to us, or did you go out and solicit this?
No, they solicited the auditor's office for that. And it was-
Doertie did, or, I mean, who originally talked about the refunding?
The refunding, the advance refunding was brought forward by Doertie.
And this is the jail particularly, right?
The bonds for the jail? Is that what you're talking about, the bonds for the jail?
Mm-hmm.
I think some of those bonds are included with this, yes. It's a variety of bonds, and I'm not an expert on what's all included in there.
So Doertie came to us with this idea?
No. Doertie came to us with an advance refunding idea that would have saved the county eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars, and that would have had double fees on it. PFM said, "Wait, and we're going to come up with one point six million dollars, and you'll have one set of fees on it." So, no, this was not Doertie's original idea, although they did contact me about a week ago and asked me what I was going to do, and I told them that this was going to happen, and I was also interested in their current assessment of the situation. I have received no response, and I don't see those folks here today.
What?
In fairness to that, I think both of them were on vacation last week, but did have access to their emails.
If I may-
Commissioner Kelly.
My understanding is that perhaps Doertie was kind of providing this financial, whatever you call it, in the past, as part of their services, they weren't charging us for us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And now we're going to pay somebody to do it?
No. We're not going to pay anybody to do anything until we have a movement, an issue of the bonds, or a refunding of the bonds. And that would be true of Doertie or PFM. Neither one of the financial advisors' job is to give us options and financial advice, and they make their money when we do an issue.
Yeah. Was not Doertie doing a good job of that?
Well, I would tell you this, Commissioner, that the job that I got with Doertie sounded like it was good on the face of it, and I got a second opinion, and the advice that I got on a second opinion was great advice, and I prefer the latter.
Have we dealt with PFM before?
No, we have not as a county. I think Doertie has typically done the financial advisor role and then turned around and done the underwriter role as well. I became aware of PFM when I was on the city council, and they did the financial advising on the Lewis and Clark project, as well as the levy refunding, I believe. And Jessica, I'd have to defer to you. Is there any other projects that come to your mind with the city?
We did not do those.
Please come forward.
We did not do the Lewis and Clark, but we did do the levy. We've done a refunding for the city, as well as the entertainment, the new convention center.
Thank you.
The new events center.
Any other questions?
Well, I have a question. Bob, I'm looking at the materials that you submitted, and I'm looking at this August 5th, 2012 memo that looks like something from the CIA. There's all this blacked-out language.
[laughing]
And there's all these CCs. I count at least six CCs. And I guess, why the-
Okay, we're kind of jumping ahead a little bit, but I'd like to explain that. And what that is, that's point number five. And what that letter is, what that does, is it's a new requirement from the municipal securities rulemaking board that requires when somebody is your financial advisor and they change hats to be the underwriter, they sign this letter and send this to you. And what this letter does is tells you that they no longer have to have your financial interests at heart.
Okay.
That they are operating independently and have their own interests.
Okay.
And I brought that letter along to demonstrate that, you know, things are changing here in the bond market.
So it's just a generic letter?
It is a generic letter. It was not, this was made out to somebody else here, and it was redacted, you know, to cover up any association.
It wasn't sent to us, though?
No, but it could be, depending on the financial advisor that we choose.
That's fine. I just thought it was originally sent to us, and I thought-
Good, thank you. That takes care of point five. So-
So do you want to move on, and we'll go on to point two?
I do. And, you know, the third thing I do is, I got a recommendation from the office, the auditor's office, of hiring an independent financial advisor. Now, also, today in the audience are two gentlemen, they're concerned citizens, and I would wonder, Mrs. Chair, Madam Chair, if it would be appropriate if they were able to come forward this time, they have some financial expertise, and testify on this point.
Yeah, be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarity of the record, though, nobody's being sworn. Nobody's testifying, but they're doing a presentation.
Sorry about the terminology.
Yeah.
Good morning. Could you just identify yourself and your address, please?
Good morning. I'm Rich Lauer, and I'm a resident of Sioux Falls at 2017 South Austin Drive. I'm joined this morning by John Fromel. John and I have some experience in the investment banking world combined. We added it up this morning, it's ninety-three years. Mine includes being a senior managing director of a New York Stock Exchange member firm. John is a retired chief investment officer of Guggenheim Partners, where he was responsible for twenty-six billion, that's billion with a B, in assets, primarily bonds. John and I both have the privilege of serving as chair of the South Dakota Investment Council. We're here this morning to speak very briefly on two issues. But before I do, I want to make it crystal clear that neither of us have any financial interest in any of the county's transactions, undertakings. The issues being discussed this morning will not affect us one way or another, except I would parenthetically tell you, in January, when my wife and I received our real estate tax notices, we noticed there was a slight increase because of an opt-out on the part of the county. Shirley and I are very supportive of the county's work and the need for that opt-out. I would tell you, we are not supportive of the county having a financial transaction, though, that enriches the investment banking community at the expense of the taxpayers of the county. Briefly, there are two issues we'd like to ask you to support. One is the auditor's proposal to hire an independent financial advisor. If you refer to the handbook on debt issuance from the Government Finance Officers Association, I suspect all of you have that handbook, it is eminently clear that you should have someone sitting on your side of the table who is an expert representing your interests. Commissioner Pecus would tell us that the county was being sued for a substantial amount of money. We would not look to the counsel for the plaintiff to advise us as to what was in our best interest. And it's for that reason that this notion of having an advisor from the investment banking community seek to act as your advisor, and then turn around and put on a hat and want to be the underwriter that buys the bonds, it's a conflict of interest that your professional association tells you is basically unresolvable. You cannot expect that someone's going to advise you to the detriment of their best interests. When you have an independent financial advisor sitting with you on your side of the table, whether you sell your bonds competitively or negotiate with an investment banker, someone is there providing the expertise that you do not have, and none of you assumed that you have, to represent the taxpayers of the county. Secondly, we would urge you to consider, when you issue debt, doing it competitively, which is something the county has not done heretofore. I think the city of Sioux Falls has had recent experience, starting with the Lewis and Clark bonds. I believe all of the issues subsequent, including Lewis and Clark, and subsequent to that, have been competitive. On the events center, there was a difference of over four million dollars between the best, the most expensive bid, when those bonds went to market. You can imagine for a moment, if they had negotiated the deal with the firm that happened to provide the offer that would have cost the taxpayers four million dollars, where do you suppose those bonds would have been sold? If we were residents of Minnesota or North Dakota, you would be required to sell the bonds competitively. And if you were going to negotiate the deal, you would be required to have the advice of an independent, not an investment banking firm, but an independent financial advisor, telling you that it was in your best interest to negotiate the bond sale. And there are some rare, rare instances where negotiated sales are appropriate. And again, this handbook refers to those. But for the vast majority of instances, and particularly with a good credit rating issuer like Minnehaw County, competitive sales are in the best interest of the taxpayers. The, I would just conclude, I thought it was interesting this morning, you buy salt based on a competitive bid. When you issue bonds, all you are doing is renting money. You don't care where it comes from, as long as George Washington is on all the one-dollar bills that come into the county's treasury. The bonds can be purchased by a firm in New York, or Chicago, or Texas. It doesn't make any difference. You want to rent the money at the lowest possible cost, just as you buy salt at the lowest possible cost. I don't mean to oversimplify it, but unless you sell your bonds competitively, you don't know what the true cost of money slash salt was that morning in the marketplace. If there are any questions, John and I'd be happy to entertain them. And again, thank you for allowing us a few moments to speak on these issues.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Rich, I had an opportunity of actually watching some of the testimony when Mr. Blankfield, the head of, I think it was Goldman Sachs, was testifying before, I believe it was the House and the Senate, regarding actually some of the bond sales that, of course, Goldman Sachs was involved in. And one of those requirements was their inability to do exactly what you identified, basically wear the hat of being the proponent of some of the bonds they were selling, when they were actually betting against those same bonds and whether or not they were going to be worth what they were actually peddling to individuals. Is that essentially what you're talking about, that conflict of interest that's inherent within the system?
Well, when, if your mission as a business entity is to buy bonds from an issuer at the highest possible interest rate, because the higher the interest rate, the more saleable that bond is, that afternoon or the next morning in the marketplace, then that business objective that you have is in conflict with the people that you propose to buy the bonds from. And the only way to resolve that is to separate that totally, and that's why your professional association says, you need an advisor. No one questions that, because none of us are expert on the day-to-day, everyday activities in the bond market and the structuring of deals and all of the nuances that are attendant to that. So you need the advisor. But you need an advisor that comes and sits with you on your side of the table, just as when, if the county had a big lawsuit, they would retain counsel to represent them. It's exactly the same situation. You cannot expect the party representing someone that's in an adversarial position. This isn't illegal or immoral, it's just an adversarial position. You cannot expect that party to represent their interest and bear it at the same time.
Right.
John, please.
You took the microphone, please. Just identify yourself again and your address, please. Thank you.
John Fromel, 602 East Garden, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I don't know if, Rich, I'm going to jump in over here, only because what you just said about Blankfield, that's exactly what it is.
Yeah.
That's that conflict of interest.
I was just going to say-
All right. Thanks, Scott.
That's why you brought me along.
Yeah.
And if he should have come up first, then we've all been on to the next item of business. Anyway, any other questions?
Commissioner Kelly.
Does the size of the bond affect the interest level? I mean, a lot of our bonds are, the events center was, what, a hundred million dollar worth of bonds? I mean, it was a big deal. We're not talking anywhere near that, I don't think, around the county. Does sometimes the placement of these bonds, because if they're only a ten million or five million dollar issue, more difficult? I mean, if you don't have the interest, you don't have the interest in a small bond sale, it would have in a big one, is that-
Well, I would defer to Jessica, that she or her firm, in my understanding, is they represent issuers of all sizes. I think, and I don't know whether this speaks to directly to your question, but I believe that the threshold in North Dakota and Minnesota is that if you issue over a million, or is that correct, in public debt, that you have to do it competitively? There's some rule, but it certainly isn't, it doesn't kick in at thirty or forty million dollars. But Jessica can probably respond to that. Now, probably will.
To that end, there are investors that are interested in all bond sizes. So actually, there is an entire investor class of largely banks that are interested in transactions of ten million or less, because they are bank-qualified, and so they have additional tax exemptions for those banks. And so part of a transaction isn't, and this goes competitive or negotiated, isn't the size of the transaction. You're not going to get better pricing necessarily for a hundred million dollar deal. It's what sort of investor class that you are seeking. And so there are underwriters and bidders on a competitive basis that primarily focus on only those transactions that are ten million or less. So there is a broad range. We sell bonds competitively anywhere from five hundred thousand to five hundred million, honestly.
Mr. Lauer, thank you so much. I found your presentation compelling. I'm interested in auditing all your future lectures. But my question then is-
You're not going to be very busy.
Good, I'm bad at homework. What's the best way, then, to choose an independent advisor? I mean, do we put that out for a competitive bid as well, then, or do we just take, you know, what, I mean, how do we decide on an independent advisor?
Well, I've never selected one, Commissioner Burr, so I really don't have any input in that regard. I believe the one- I think, and I would stand corrected, I think they're the largest in the United States. And my understanding is they're very active in Minnesota and North Dakota, and I'm here in, have activity here in South Dakota. So I guess you could certainly consult with others that have retained them and, and ask if they're pleased with their services. But beyond that, I wouldn't know how to put an RFP together. I'd be better off asking for assault, frankly.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I'm not really, none of, none of Rich.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
Yes, I would like to have Ken give us his views on this thing. I mean, he's our guy, and I'd just like, you know, he probably knows more about this than any of us do, and unless he doesn't really wanna do this at all.
I'm not sure Bob has finished with...
Oh, his presentation, yeah. Bob, do you have...
If you've got more to go, let, we'll bring Ken in after the, at the end.
Let you finish your points.
Okay. I'd like to thank these two gentlemen for showing up, or these two citizens, their, their knowledge is much more in-depth than, than mine, and I hope to, hope to be that smart someday, but I'm not sure it's gonna happen, if we've got that much time left on the clock here. But the fourth thing that I wanted to bring forward was the examination of the contract that was offered by an independent financial advisor. And Mr. Barth, maybe I can help answer part of your question. The school recently did, about a month ago, or two months ago, did RFPs for financial advisors. Only two firms answered that, one was PFM and the other was Doherty. When I sent out my RFP, that was the same thing. You know, we're, we're, this is, we're a small issuer, we're not, we're, we're pretty safe, but there's not a lot of people interested in doing our business, to be honest with you. Most of them are looking for bigger, bigger purses. But, you know, I had, the contract is the same for PFM that it was before. It's a little bit more expensive by, than Mr. Doherty's, but I would, I would tell you that the fees pale in comparison in, in regard to the savings that the one had advised the county to, the route that the county had advised us to take. I also took that contract to Gordy Swanson, when he was the state's attorney, and then he, he gave it his approval. And Kirsten, I forwarded it to Kirsten. Kirsten, I defer to any comments on the contract for you.
May I?
Yep.
The contract's legally sound. I reviewed it for, for those purposes, of course, whether you want to proceed on it as a policy issue, but I have no legal concerns with it, so.
Okay, very good. And, you know, the other part, folks, today, the two things requested today require action, approval of the, the hiring, you know, as an independent financial advisor, and the approval of going forward with the refunding process. Obviously Gerald's not here today, I regard this as a big thing, so if this commission, somebody out here would want to wait until we got the full board on to do that vote, why I think that might be the way to go right now. I was not aware when I sent this memo out that Gerald was gonna be there, Cindy told me later that day. And the other thing that I did not do was, was create a resolution, because it created, the resolution takes a lot of work, it's probably gonna cost some money, and, you know, looking at the genuine circumstances we have here, you know, I thought it'd be more appropriate to bring that forward at the time the commissioners would desire that. So, you know, I, I wanna remind you that when I got here, at the county, sitting down in, in this room here, and Sue was still the auditor, and I sat in on the audit things, and I watched this budget crumble, one thing at a time. And our thing then was, our mantra was, well, we're gonna think outside the box, and just because we did things like we've always done them, doesn't mean we have to continue on in that. And I took that to heart, folks. PFM, they are here because I respect their advice, and they gave us, they gave me great advice. Not that Doherty and Company, this does not mean it's the end of our relationship with Mr., you know, the Doherty Company, it certainly doesn't. They, they certainly have some roles that they could step into. On the Event Center thing, you know, the city had PFM, you know, as the advisor on that, and Doherty wound up being part of the, the syndicate that, that bought it. So there's still roles out there for them, it just would not be the both hats. And quite honestly, I seriously, have serious reservations about the, the conflict of interest, that somebody's our financial advisor and then they turn around and be the underwriter. That, that, it, it really bothers me to have that there. You're the commission, you guys can decide what to do with that. You know, it's, it's also, you know, we would pay the consequences if, if things aren't going quite as they should be. And I would also say that, you know, over the years, you know, the, the Doherty firm, they're very, very respected, but, but you know, the city changed their, their thing about this. Recently, the school did not. But I also had a conversation with Mr. Vick, who's their, their finance officer, and he is under the impression that Doherty Company, that hired them as a financial advisor, was barred by law to be the underwriter, and I told him that was not the case. So what their situation is down there has yet to unfold, I don't know what it is, so. But folks, I guess that's the end of my presentation here. I think this is the, you know, I, I presented this about a year ago, tried it, you guys didn't see any merit in it at the time. I was afraid to let our financial portfolio go unattended, should have something have happened, but we lucked out, and here we are today. And then a couple of months ago, I think I individually gave all of you this basic packet here, the only change in that packet is that the, the money actually got a little bit better since we waited from that time. So unless there's any other questions, I guess that would conclude my presentation here today.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
I have a couple of questions, Bob, and, you know, I gotta say that having gotten us in our packet on Friday, and with yesterday being a, a holiday, I really haven't been able to review it as carefully as I'd like. I mean, it's 10 pages long, and as Commissioner Pecos pointed out, you know, some of it is pretty heavily redacted. But I, you know, I guess it, it does seem like a little bit of a rush to try to make an approval on this today. I would say that I noticed a reference to LIBOR, which, you know, that's still, in my opinion, a subject or exposed to manipulation by those folks that are, have been manipulating it in the past. And I, I don't know exactly, I, I read it in, the word in here somewhere, I couldn't find it just now when I went back, but, you know, the, the, I don't spend my days working on, on the banking issues normally, so it's, it's a little bit dense for me. I would say that you got an email from them, or a letter from your proposed client here on February 8th, and then you emailed them back with a little chain of emails on May 10th. So that means that, you know, March and April, you weren't in any contact with them?
Well, we were, but what we were doing at that time was Highway had some, some proposals and they did some numbers for them. I think, I think the, not the JDC, but the Community Correction Center, we doubled it, we ponied up on one of those. So we have been getting advice from PFM on possible issues that we could be doing. And there is no cost to the county on that, until you, unless you would decide to do an issue, and if you would decide to use them as your financial advisor. They did that for us gratis, and I think it was, it was a good faith effort to show what they're capable of.
I guess, you know, it just made me kinda wonder about that gap in communication, then.
Well, there was, there was very, there was very little to do until the time come due on this here, and there's, there's no reason for the gap in communication. As a matter of fact, like I say, we did have it, it just wasn't about this. The only thing that could change, as far as the circumstance would go, is the numbers. And like I said, those numbers actually got better during that time. The, the savings to the county actually increased during that time. Like I said, the timeline that we were looking at, you know, it's, it's, we can, we can, we can go on a couple, three weeks, or maybe a month or so, but you know, the timeline is the timeline. If you wanna get this done by the first of the year, we're gonna have to move on it fairly soon. And like I said, I mean, we, we do have a little bit of time. I, I agree with you, the LIBOR rate, the big banking, I see everybody's back to doing, a lot of people are back to doing derivatives and all these things that seem to put the country in a, in a, in a tough spot to begin with. I, I, you know, even with the, the, the big reform act that was purported to be out there, they're winning their way through that, and banks are fighting it, it's, it's a real, it's a real dogfight out there. And I'm not certain, from my point of view, and from what I've read, that there's much been changed in big banking. We're kinda still at that same spot, Jeff, I agree with you. And it's a little bit frightening to me.
I'm gonna make a comment, did you have another one?
Yeah, this is just a comment. I'd ask Ken to come up, but I, I'm just still not comfortable with this whole thing. There's been a relationship with Doherty, and I haven't, still can't get my hands around what's gonna cost where. If, if we deferred this until June 25th, it would, one, give, it would give the Doherty people who, as I understand, you said were out of town this weekend, both of them. It's a Memorial Day weekend, and that's understandable. I would like to hear from them again. I know they weren't, they were here when you made your presentation, but they didn't make any remarks. And at that ti, I think between now and then, Ken can maybe perhaps advise the commission on where his stand is on this, rather than make him stand up now, which he didn't know I was gonna do anyway, so.
But I'm happy to come up.
It's, I, well, then maybe it would be an opportunity for Ken to, to give us his opinion on this. Not that we don't trust yours, Bob, but I, you know, I think also Ken is our guy, and, and, you know, it's, sometimes you have to look to the person that's working directly for you to, for advice, too. If, if you wouldn't mind, Ken.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I would tell you, I'm your guy, too. I work for you.
I understand, I understand that, I understand that, but...
And Ken and I also had this observa, had this conversation Thursday, and he says it's your baby, Bob. You know, he doesn't want much to do with it.
Well, that's why I asked him to come up.
Commissioners, you know, and again, you know, I recognize this is, as an elected official, the auditor, this is, you know, a chief call of his to make a recommendation on how you proceed. I mean, I do see great value in the fact of retaining an independent financial advisor, as that's been recommended by Mr. Lauer. I know that's of interest to, to Bob as well. And, you know, Bob, from what he's told me, has done his diligence as far as doing some comparison, and that between proposals, you know, proposal, but I will remind you, you have not done a formal RFP for this process, and I don't believe, and I haven't been privy or seen anything of a side-by-side comparison on what the results of, you know, or review of the proposals have been, and that may have some merit. But again, you know, I haven't been involved with that, and I did reiterate to Bob, that's his process. One of the things that does strike me, though, as we take a look at this and some of the potential savings, and where I think we do have to give a little consideration to, is how that will impact our future capital improvement schedules that we have, and that, and if there's an opportunity to review what those savings may be, and how it might help us in some other projects, you know, that we bring to the table, I think that's a benefit to take a look at. You know, unfortunately, we're not gonna be ready to do that until we do our budget hearing schedules coming down the pike here, which are gonna be starting here in hopefully mid-June. And, you know, building and the capital improvement schedule is one key item that we take a look at. So perhaps before you make some sort of a decision on what, you know, particularly as it relates to the refunding, you know, proportion of the proposal, 'cause I see there's two different things here. But particularly as it relates to the refunding and whether to go through, is how does this impact our other, our bond schedules that we have in our capital improvement plan? What kind of ability does this free up for us to do some other things within the, the capital improvement plan, et cetera? But that's my two cents, Rich.
Thank you.
I have a comment, if you're done. Bob, did you have another comment?
No, I just wanna say Mr. McFarland's absolutely right, and Jessica from PFM has referred to that several times, that our debt structure would depend on what we want, how to arrange that, there's a number of ways of doing it. I don't have that expertise, she certainly does, her firm certainly does, and would offer us an array of options in that area.
I just wanted to say, you know, I don't think any of us thinks that we're financial advisors, nor understands even the beginning of it. I see a lot of merit in going forward and doing something like this, but I also feel like we need to work it into our budget process, which we're going forward with. I don't really wanna see a date of June 28th or whatever put on it, because we don't know where we're gonna be at when we're do it, when we're working through our budget. I would like to see it deferred to the budget process, we can figure it out as we go along what point we're gonna put that in there. I'm afraid if you put us on a date right now, we may end up being the same thing and deferring it another week or two. I do see a lot of merit in this. We were elected, we're elected officials to protect our citizens' tax money and to be the policymakers for this. And I think we should move forward, I just don't know that today is the day to make a decision on that, particularly with Gerald gone, too, this is a discussion, a discussion for all five of us to have.
Gerald did make those same observations to me, and I, I know they're true. Just looked at the date on this here, and I did wanna bring it forward, we, like I said, Commissioner Barth said he wanted some more time to think it over, and that was, since there's, not everybody's here today, you know, I would respectfully request that we defer any votes on these things for a period of three weeks, and then at that point, maybe we come back and look at it again and decide if we need some more time. Meanwhile, what I would do is, is keep in touch with PFM, since they've been very generous with their time to us so far, and see what, see what that might result, if there's any consequences or advantages to doing that.
I'll make a motion to defer for three weeks.
Have a second? Do you have a second? Would you like to make a substitute motion?
It's not substitute, it isn't. The other motion did not...
The motion failed.
It would seem to me that maybe this is the time to table this, it leaves it on the table, for bring, we can bring it up at whatever date we feel is appropriate, or work with the auditor's office. It doesn't kill it, it leaves it there. And I think, I'm not sure what the rules say, I'm bringing it back up, but I don't think that'll be a problem. That way, then we don't get stuck into a date, if we wanna do it the middle of August, after the whole budget is pretty well set up. So my motion would be to table.
And the motion to table, do you have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second to table. Mr. Barth?
I guess my thought would be, I'd like to discuss it some more as soon as next week. I really think this, you know, we don't have to make a decision next week either, but perhaps those that are on vacation would have some input, and I guess there's some other points I would make, but that's...
I am, I wanted to mention that, Madam Chair, I'm, I have to go to Rapid City to observe an election, and I would certainly like to be present for that. And then I would also comment, I know what happens when you table something out the legislature, and I'm not all that familiar with Robert's Rules of Order for tabling something, and that's why I would prefer the word defer, and that means we're just gonna put it off.
It's the same effect.
Same effect?
If, if it, in, in the legislature, they will table or defer to the 41st day, which is the day after the legislature meets. And, but, just tabling a motion leaves it out there. And, and it, for that very reason, you know, Jeff suggested next week, and you said you're out of town, so that was the purpose of my motion to table, would be simply to leave it there, it can be brought back for discussion at any point, and it just allows a little more flexibility.
Fair enough.
Any other comments?
Again, I guess I, I, if, if not the 4th, then I would go for the 11th.
Commissioner.
I guess, I, I seconded the, I, I thought Bob requested three weeks, I thought that seemed to be very lucid, and it made sense, but apparently it failed. So without that lucidity or reason being at the table, we'll go ahead and we'll obviously second the tabling of this. I think it's important that Mr. Bennega is present for this discussion, and I also think that, you know, even our, our friend from PFM indicated that we have a couple of months here before the rates are actually changing, and I think it's important for us to have a discussion, to look at how we get the best bang for the buck, and the longer we wait is the fire in which we burn, and I think that it's important to take that into consideration. So you can call it table, you can call it deferring, but I, I guarantee you that Commissioner Barth is gonna make a motion to bring it from the table, and I'll be supportive of it, so.
Point of order, do we need a supermajority or simple majority to bring something off the table?
Simple majority.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table.
I'd like to make another comment about the whole thing, which is, I do like this suggestion. I do think that it was a bit of a rush to try to get this done, having received this in our packets just three days ago. I also think that no matter how thin you slice it, there's two sides to a piece of toast. And so there, there is another side to this I'd like to, to hear more about, and I guess that's my comments.
We have a motion and a second to defer, any other comments?
No, actually tabled.
Tabled, sorry. Get the words right. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes four to zero, we will see it again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item 17 is a briefing and follow-up discussion on FY 2014 Long Range Plan Preliminary Budget Overview Material.
Commissioners, last week, after the commission meeting, we did an overview session of where we find ourselves going into the budget hearing process for 2014. We had supplied you with a number of different documents for your perusal, and that they range from some of our long-range plan presentations to all the way to some of our projections for our rev, new revenues going into the next year, some discussion on our means of finance, of where we would be, an overview of new personnel hires, et cetera. I will remind you that budgets are due from, from departments here at the end of the week, on May 31st, and there will be more than likely, on the basis of the discussion we had last week, some of those things that may in fact change, you know, in what's actually submitted for budget prep. You had specifically requested that, or an opportunity, after you had the chance to read some of those documents, specifically requested a chance to come back and have this time to discuss anything that you had questions on. You know, just to remind you, a couple of the critical things that we think are of import to you. Our initial revenue estimates are approximately $900,000 in general fund revenues going into the new year. A key discussion that you're going to have to have is, since we now have really gained our footing back on our cash balance within the general fund, it's not hugely, it's not, you know, the sky's the limit, but it is definitely better than what it was in 2011 and 2012, when we were going through some very, very tough times. One of the key decisions you're going to have to make is how much of that cash balance and that, that you are going to use for the cash applied, and that, and that'll be a key factor, but I want you to remember, you know, and it's my opinion that one of the reasons you built up some of that cash is so that you can use that as a resource to fund, you know, ongoing budgets, and that's why departments have done a lot of work in that regard to help restore that cash balance. So what that amount is remains to be seen once we see the final budget numbers. Again, we wanted this opportunity, or you had requested this opportunity, if there was anything on the, on the long-range plan stuff for the budget overviews, that you would want to take a look at, once you've had more chance to, to review it. So we went over some of our building, or our projected building projects that we see on the horizon. You know, Bob alluded to some of the debt service calculations that we're doing, and we're continuing to refine some of those, you know, as we get further, as we get further information. So, and again, this is just your opportunity for any questions that you may have had from that, from that presentation.
This was suggested by Commissioner Bennega, that we just have an opportunity to ask any further questions at this point, and so I'll just open it up. Does anybody have any comments? Mr. Kelly?
Well, just, I mean, there's an awful lot of pages, an awful lot of departments there, but, but looking at them, one, we had 26 employee requests, which I believe was somewhere in the tune of a million and a half, million six, something like that. Not including, well, that did include STEP, I guess, in it, but...
It did not.
It did not include STEP.
No, it did not. Those were just entire requests.
And STEP is another 400?
Close, yes.
Generally, the budgets, not all of them, but a lot, most of them seem to sit there in that 4% to 6% increase over last year, and our revenue increases are going to be somewhere around 1.5%. Is that fair to say?
Our initial calculations, if I correct, in the general fund, and that was about 1.9. By the time we factored in, you know, the property tax increases, but we've also got some, and you know, the new growth and the CPI, but we've also got some declines in revenue that have been projected, you know, in our non-property tax revenue. So that's where we're getting the 1.9. That's why I said, you know, it's important to take a look at your policy that you've had the last couple of years about getting that cash applied number that was no greater than the 5% uncollectible allowance that has had, and coupled with the department heads' work to control expenses, that has had the, the, the impact of pumping up our cash balances, and that, and, and in, historically in years past, cash applied was always higher than that 5%. And I think it can be again, going into, to the next budget year. Do I think we can approach anywhere like what we did in the years past for cash applied? Absolutely not. But it is an additional resource beyond the 1.9% increase in revenue that we've projected in this going forward.
But, but I do think that, you know, after going through the last two or three years, we don't want to drain down that cash number.
Absolutely not.
Anywhere like what we got, which means you can't always use it, sometimes you've got to leave it there to make sure that if you get another recession...
Well, just to give you some perspective, Commissioners, if you go back and look at general fund cash applied in some of the years prior to some of the difficult financial situations we were in, we were routinely running cash applied numbers in the neighborhood of five, and sometimes approaching six. Now, this, this last go-around for 2013, because of some of the policies that we implemented during the budget hearings about keeping that number low and matching up with the 5% uncollectible allowance, I believe the general fund cash balance, this is somewhere around 2.1, and that, so that, that, again, that work, along with the efforts of the departments to control expenses, has pumped up our cash balance, which is exactly what you wanted to do, to get us stabilized. It's having the exact effect. My only point in saying that, Commissioner, is just to remind you that cash, even though it's a function of cash flow for us, and that's all important, because we don't have the ability, like many governments, to set up, quote, "our rainy day reserve fund" and say, "Yep, here's our savings account." We don't get to do that, and that cash flow is so important to us, but it is still a resource that you can use to fund your budget, and determining what that right number is, is going to be key as we go forward. I think it can be higher than the 5%.
But you can't use it if you don't have it.
And that, but my point is, we, we have, in fact, built it up into levels that we have seen prior to us being in the dumps. We've done that.
Well, yeah, and I, you know, I think we talked about the reserve, or the, the 5% deal, but I, if I recall, it was more of a, we don't want to spend more than what it is, doesn't mean we can't spend less.
That's correct.
To, to, to still get this, this thing a lot more.
But once you establish what it is, then what it becomes is, what really is the controlling factor in the budgets is controlling the expenses, because you're matching up your projected revenue with cash and other revenue and property taxes to what your expenses are. And then, so beyond that, then, once you start controlling expenses, it has the same effect of, you know...
And the elephant in the room is that personnel is, what, 65% or whatever it is of, of the expenses?
And one of the reasons I wanted to point out, see, if you take a look, and this is what's encouraging, and Bob talked about this last week, if you go to the sheet, which is our general fund cash balance report, and this is what's encouraging to me, and it's, again, indicative of the policy changes that you made, plus the work of the departments. If you go back and take a look at where historically we've been, and that...
Where's that at, Ken?
And that, it's on your Dropbox, it's under Budget Overview, and it's the very first spreadsheet, and that, that's there. It's labeled as 1A.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if you look at that, and that, and you can see at the end of April, we were at 11.5 million dollars in our general fund cash applied. Now, we used to think that we were in some pretty good years in 2008 and 2009, before we started to see some problems, and that, and our, and our cash started tailing off. So as you can see, at 11.5 million dollars, that is the second highest total that we've been at during that time of year since 2007, and that, 2009 was the high point at the end of April, at 11.7, and we will start seeing, what's, what I really want to see is how we end up at, in, end of May, because then all the property taxes are in, you know, that's generally a peak time for revenue for us, and as you can see, May has typically been our flush time, so we'll have a good handle on where we're really at, at the end of May, and to see if this is a trend, and whether or not we have in fact stabilized ourselves, which I, I think we will, you'll see that. And that, so, but right now, the way we're trending, we are absolutely much better than what we were in 11 and 12, which were some really, really tough times for us. So I'm just saying that, in my opinion, based on historical trends, that I think it is prudent to use a portion, not all, and certainly not to the extent that we used to, but that it's prudent to use some of that cash to apply towards the budget in addition to the 900,000 new revenue that we're forecasting. Again, the trick is going to be, how much are you comfortable with doing? And that, and, you know, once we see all the final numbers as we prep the budget, that's one of the things that we do when we first, when we get all the numbers together, is we'll come in and we will tell you. In fact, we did it last year, and we'll say, "We believe that the cash applied number can be no higher than this, if we're going to stabilize." And if I'm not mistaken, when we did that last year, we were, we were, said we would be comfortable with pushing almost three, $3 million of cash applied. You settled for 2.1, but we did come in at that time and said, "We think you can push three." So, I mean, we will do that as part of the budget overviews that we will do, once we get all the numbers in, so. But I just wanted, you know, again, it's my opinion, you can use that as a resource.
Commissioner Barth?
I just would say that economists are known as practitioners of the dismal science, and I'd like to join Commissioner Kelly in urging all of us to deflate our expectations until we see what we can do.
And again, we will do that once we get the numbers in, but, you know, looking at where we're tracking so far, and that we're in a better situation and a better discussions than what we were in 2011 and 2012.
Any other questions, comments?
But all those documents, and they will stay in that Dropbox area for you, so that you can refer back to them, et cetera. So those aren't disappearing at all during the budget hearing process. You will have access to all of that information all the way through the hearing processes. One of the things that you'll start seeing this week, too, now that we've got them, we're going to be dumping in the outside agency requests, you know, so that you can at least start familiarizing yourself with those, and that, and, you know, and we ask for increased information from those folks this, this time around. So you'll have all that, like, that should be on your Dropbox by the end of the week, but, and those will stay through. So May 31st is the deadline for submitting budgets, and very shortly after that, you know, we will, you know, the auditor's office will start, you know, plugging in the numbers and saying, "All right, here's, here's the total, here's what it looks like. We sent you a copy, Marie sent you copies of a spreadsheet to try to indicate what days you are available to meet, what timeframes in order to do budget hearings." Typically, once we get those all back from you, and I would urge you to try to get those back to us by the end of this week, we will start setting the blocks of time when we see that you're all available to do it, and we'll schedule the initial overview session, and then we'll start scheduling hearings, and that, so we'll have the blocks of times locked in.
I think most of those are in, so we should know very soon.
Very soon.
When we are going to be meeting to move forward.
Correct.
Any other comments? I guess we'll move on to our next budget meeting, then. Our next item is Minnehaw County Commissioner Liaison Reports. Any reports on liaisons? Commissioner Barth?
This could be as much under new business as liaison reports, but I went to an airport event, and I was the only commissioner there, and was, they're, they're doing great things at our airport here in Minnehaw County, and the future looks well, looks good as well. An additional item, I went to the Lewis and Clark Annual Business Meeting and...
Did it awake?
Well, let's just say that 208 years ago, Lewis and Clark came through this area, and in another 208 years, we'll have their project done. Anyway, I would like us to consider writing a letter to our federal legislators and to our chief executive on behalf of the Lewis-Clark and Clark Project, and I'd like the, tonight I will suggest that the city do the same thing. I talked to Greg Jameson about it briefly, and, you know, just a renewed effort on our part to encourage progress on this, because they're getting enough money to, like, have a pulse, but not enough to, to dig, and...
Keep to my side.
So I guess, if you would allow me, I'd make a motion to ask us to write a letter to support the Lewis and Clark funding.
I have a motion.
Got a motion and a second to write a letter to the federal legislators and...
And the chief executive.
And chief executive regarding Lewis and Clark funding. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Jeff, that'd be good. Any other liaison reports?
Well, just a comment on the airport. The week before, Seacog had a, I think it was a, Metro Planning, maybe, was it, that had the, they had the tour, and the tour was the airport, and we got an opportunity to go way behind the scenes. I had no idea we had a baggage system like they've got out there. It's like what you see in the movies, but it was, it was, yeah, it, we can be proud of that airport, and even though it's sort of a city deal, and he points the commissioners, it's a benefit to the county, to the whole area, so. But you missed a good one there.
Yeah. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to new business. Is there any new business?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And as much as Pastor Jeff is here, I would like to ask him if he would address us. Apparently he came to speak to us.
Did you come to speak to us? Okay. Pastor Hayes, you want to take the microphone and identify yourself, please?
I'm Pastor Jeff Hayes from Faith Temple Church. My home address is 2325 South Woodbine Lane here in Sioux Falls, and I'm sorry about barging in and not being on the agenda. I do appreciate all the work that you do, and I appreciate the time that you're giving me this morning. I was going to go to the church, but I felt just kind of pushed down this way, and so I don't know if it's a divine thing, or it was the pizza I ate last night, but could have been that. I did send a letter out to you last week, and I don't know if you had a chance to read it or not. It has to do with the Nordstrom Johnson Building out at the Sioux Empire Fairgrounds, and Art Marie Nordstrom donated this building to the fairgrounds, and to be used by the Faith Temple Food Giveaway on Fridays. The building, I believe, of course, is owned by the fairgrounds as well as the county. I got a little note from the mayor, and I just picked up something from him that he thought it was a private building, and that, you know, the funds that were needed needed to continue to be raised privately. And what's a need there is, the building is complete as of like this week, and, but it does need the utilities to be hooked up, as well as a fence to be built, so that building can be used by people that rent it, and they can just come in the north gate and use the building separate from the rest of the fairgrounds. But I grasp from the mayor's note to me that many people think that it's a private building, and it doesn't belong to the county of the fairgrounds, and I don't know if you all know that it does belong to the fairgrounds and to the county. I believe, and Scott Wick could talk to you probably in a more direct way about the amount of money that needs to be raised, but it's about, I believe about $35,000 to put the electricity, water, and sewer, and to build this fence, and then the building will be functional, and it'll be usable. Right now, the building kind of sits there, and it can't be rented. I also want to encourage you to consider paying for the utilities and the fence, because then the fairgrounds can start to rent the building out, and it, people will be paying rent, and so I believe that you would recoup your investment rather quickly, because this building will be highly sought after to have events in. I could go on and on, I do that every, every Sunday, so, but I wasn't sure if you had any questions for me. I was going to mention to you, too, that some folks have... I was gonna mention to you, too, that some folks have a misconception about the food giveaway that we have there, typically, you know, almost every week. And many people believe that, you know, we just use the building, the armory, without paying rent. We do pay rent for the, the food giveaway to have it there. And also, we'll continue to pay a rent at the new building, the Nordstrom Johnson Building. And so we're just not getting a free ride there, but we also pay rent, and we'll contribute to the investment of, of course, the utilities being put in if you, if you choose to do that. Appreciate the city. They are paving around the building. And so they've even invested some things into making that building functional.
Kelly, Commissioner Kelly?
I went out there the other day and looked at it. It's not, there's no frills in this thing, but it's very functional, and it's gonna be a good asset out there. I don't believe we've had a formal request. Now, the letter I got was to the mayor, and I was copied on it.
Yes.
So my thought was probably that, right now, it's in the mayor's, and I don't know whether he's indicated whether he's willing to do any more or not. At one time, it was, there was questions asked about maybe the city and the county going half on the thing. At this point, it would be a shame that $35,000 is holding up, and I understand they haven't had any luck with private donations. There doesn't seem to be an interest level there, but, and I would think if a formal request came in, even as early as next week, that we could then act on a possible loan or, or a grant or whatever to them, but, yeah, it, you know, to an extent, it's our building, because it's on our property. And I, I'd be ashamed to have 35, the Nordstroms have stuck an awful lot of money into this thing. And, and I don't think the Nordstroms should, I don't think they should go back and ask for that. It was clear from the beginning that, that they were gonna build the building, and that there'd have to be other sources. You might correct on that, Cindy, the other resources that would provide the things like, and the city did asphalt that lot, which is going to be a big deal, so. But my only comment is that there, there has not, to my knowledge, been a formal request and that we can act on. And we may wanna relay that on to, to Scott, too, 'cause I know he was in and briefed us, but from there, nothing happened.
I'm sure he'd be more than willing to give you a formal request on that.
Commissioner Barra?
I did sit next to the mayor at lunch the other day and asked him about this, and he said no. Now, that said, he may not have understood that this is not a private building, so. But on the, on the other hand, they're also doing lots of other things at the fairgrounds, and, you know, we have to give them credit for that. Now, we, on the other hand, have spent many millions of dollars at the fairgrounds over the years, and although it's our property and stuff, we're not exactly loaded with, with, with money. I do think that there's opportunities to raise this kind of money privately. I've been to fundraisers, which raised tens of thousands of dollars, and I've also, I know that part of that is also getting the word out. And so I think that an opportunity like this to speak, it's unfortunate we don't have more media here today, but maybe we could, if we had it on our agenda, you know, get a little more publicity for the project that truly needs to be completed so that we can fully utilize it. And that's what I know.
Well, to gear up for raising $35,000, sometimes could cost you 25 just to gear up for. It's, it's difficult on a small amount like that, and it's, I think they expected maybe somebody would come forward and didn't. I think it's important that we get this thing online, though, and, and get the water, sewer, and fencing, and I think fencing's very important, particularly, I think we should pay attention. The, the city has, asphalt-ing that lot is a big, I would guess, a pretty big deal. I mean, look, look at the lot down by the Expo Building, and I, this is gonna be much more attractive than that. So I would hope that we get a request, and we could, could act on it. I think it's some way of getting the money to them quickly so they can get it done.
If I could comment just for a second, I appreciate Commissioner Barra's comments. The, the Argus Leader, as well as Kelo, did a news story about the private funds needing to be raised, but nothing really came. And so it's kinda dead in the water. Also, I think, I did send another letter to the, the mayor, saying that the, the building itself isn't a private building. It is owned by the, the fairgrounds and the county, and so he may have a different view on it now. I think it'd be a wonderful investment for, you know, if it be the city or the commission to work together to make this happen. Just speaking from our food giveaway, a lot of people don't know actually about concern that. A lot of people think that we just receive the food, and we give it out, and it's no cost to us. Typically, a food giveaway that we do once a week, and I realize that this building will be used more than just for us, but the food giveaway that we do, including the Argus Leader milk, typically costs about $3,000 a week to put on, at the, at the fairgrounds. And so I, I see that as an asset to the county and the state and the city, because those governments do refer people to us that are in need. But once again, I, I don't wanna talk a lot about the food giveaway, because it's just one thing that will happen at that building, maybe once a week. Also, Art Marie signed an agreement that if the fairground gets a better offer to use that building, that Commissioner Kelly saw the other day, then we would be bumped to the armory to do the food giveaway, and the funds that would be generated by the new building on a Friday, when we typically would be there, would still be received by the fairgrounds, and we would be moved over to the, the armory. So I think it's a win-win situation, but to prolong it is detrimental, because that building just sits there, and it can't be rented.
It was pretty clear, though, the Nordstroms had two, two missions there. One was to the fair, the other was to your, your food giveaway, and I believe he's a member of your church.
As liaison to the fair, I just have a couple of comments. This is a nonprofit building, the fair is a nonprofit. This is built by donations specifically, and that was kinda how we went into it in the beginning, knowing that it needs to be donations. And I do think it's a lack of people understanding and knowing. I'm gonna refer it back to, or compare it to when the Bookmobile was cut in 2001. That happened in, well, September, basically, of 2001, and it was $85,000, I believe, Ken, and that money was raised by the Friends of the Bookmobile in less than three months, and it was phone calls. And it was phone calls, phone calls, phone calls. And I think the phone calls I had, I don't think anybody turned me down when I said, "This is what it is, this is nonprofit, you know, the, the county can't afford the fair, or can't afford the Bookmobile." And people stepped forward, and I think people, if they understood this was a nonprofit, and you're right, it's not just for the food giveaway, which is huge, we need it for that, but they can also rent this out for wedding receptions or other things. There's, you know, a shortage of places to have large events in Sioux Falls. There's great parking out there. There's a lot of advantages to having, it's a revenue source for a nonprofit fairgrounds. So it is, it is a huge need, but I think it's more, people don't know that they just donate 50 bucks, it helps. So, Ken, did you have some comments?
No, and I'm not sure how I'm gonna go with this, but I just wanted you to-
Ken, could you step to the mic?
Yes. Just so that you kinda know where things are, I know I've had a couple of questions about this, and I just wanted to make sure that, right now, in the county's building project list for 2013, excuse me, and you have money that's been allocated to the Fair Association, and that for some work out there, but I wanna reiterate, it's out of the building fund. One is to do the HVAC renovations that are currently underway, and that we had $140,000 for that. That may come in a little bit less, you know, we're not, we're, they're working on the contracts now. I know that my last conversation with Scott, they ran into some issues. You had $20,000 allocated for asphalt, but like you said, the city is doing some work, so here, about a month or so ago, you reauthorized them to do some other uses for that money, and that, and they're in the plans of doing that. And they're working, and then specifically, some $25,000 for some door rehab. If you were gonna consider a request like Commissioner Kelly has done, I mean, there's really two approaches that you could do. And that, one, if you're inclined to do it this year, that is gonna require a notice of hearing with a posted amount to do a supplement to the building fund in order to, to take care of it. And that, you know. The other one, if you are inclined, you know, I've got a number of projects that the fair has requested for coming up years, and that, and that is something that you could build into the building fund in other years, too, if you're inclined to do this kinda thing. So if you're inclined to do it, you've either gotta do a supplement this year, or you gotta build it somewhere into the budget.
Ken, you said 2014, did you mean 2013?
2013 is what we have right now, and that-
So there is some money there.
But there, it's committed money.
I was gonna say, comment on that is that the Fair Board would not be in favor of you taking the money.
Right.
They've committed to other projects and moving it. We've had that discussion.
They've committed these other things.
And that money has been committed to specific projects.
That's why I said, it would have to require, more than likely, if you're inclined to do this, a supplement of some sort to, to do the work, so. 'Cause it is committed money.
Right, it's committed money. I think going, I just wanna reiterate, going into this, we realized that this was probably not money coming from the county. The county has given a ton of money to the fairgrounds, and we wanted this to be an outside people donating to build this building. I wanna see it done as much as anybody else do. I'm on the Fair Board working towards this, but it, before, we had outside, I mean, the idea was to get outside people to donate to finish this up, and it does need to be finished. And that might take a lot of phone calls. Any other comments? Thank you, Pastor Hayes. I think we can move on to any other new business? Any old business?
Move adjournment.
For executive session?
We do have executive-
For personnel?
For personnel.
So I have a motion?
Second.
Motion, a second, to move to executive session for personnel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Motion adjourned.